Go ahead and. All right, good evening and welcome to the Knox County Commission meeting to our zoning and land use part of the meeting. I was about to say, if you're following this online, it's probably simulcast through CTV and the internet. However, just as a reminder, this is sort of a separate Zoom compared to the other, the meeting that we just wrapped up. So anyhow, Madam Clerk, would you please? Open us up by doing a quick roll call.
Commissioner Gill.
Present.
Commissioner Carringer.
Present.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Nystrom.
Here.
Commissioner Skidmaker.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Bessler. Commissioner Beeler.
Here.
Commissioner Daley.
Here.
Commissioner Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Biggs.
Present.
And waiting on Commissioner Bessler. Ten members are present.
Okay, we can go ahead and begin moving through the agenda. So Madam Clerk, would you call the first one, please?
Okay, item number forty-nine, eight dash H dash nineteen dash RZ has been deferred. We're going to page eleven, item number fifty. Requested Scott Davis, Asana Investments LLC for rezoning from A agricultural to PR plan residential up to five dwelling units per acre. Property is located at ninety-one twenty-seven, ninety-one thirty-seven, ninety-one forty-one and zero, Bluegrass Road. Parcel ID one four four, one one four, one one five, one one six, and one 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 point zero one. This is in the fifth commission district.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're here. All right, I'm just double checking. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir, Scott Davis.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Green, could you go ahead and give us a quick summary of this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, members of the commission, the planning commission voted by twelve to zero to recommend approval of the PR plan residential zoning up to three point four or five dwelling units an acre for this property because it is consistent with the LDR plan classification for the South West County and also is compliant with the slope analysis for the property. There were some questions via email regarding notification. Advertising for this property. The visit first appeared on the planning commission agenda in February and was postponed for a couple of months. When a comment occurs, there's no new notification. We try to reduce the amount of paperwork and the cost to all involved, but depend on the applicant or the neighbors, that first notification to stay tuned with the application through the process. There were also questions regarding the compliance of actually, there are three projects that go together. The next three are act or will become one project. They're all contiguous properties and they were, they all depend on the same access. There was a question regarding whether that access agreement was compliant with the homeowners association standards and agreement. And considering the use of property, the planning commission nor Knox County neither review and look at private agreements such as homeowners association. We look at the legal ramifications. We check with Jim Snowden of Engineering and Public Works as to whether the easement would meet the requirements for public street access to the property. We did all our due diligence with regard to the compliance of this with the standards of Knox County. However, we did not review private agreements between private individuals because they are not within the purview of the planning commission nor Knox County to enforce. Again, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve the rezoning at three point four or five dwelling units per acre.
All right, thank you. Okay, is the applicant present?
Yes, sir. Scott Davis, P O Box one one three one five Knoxville, three seven nine three nine, and y'all may want to, and this is at Charles Will, but forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one are all related to the same properties. I guess.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, I'm looking at that. Yeah, yes, Mr. Skidmaker.
Could the applicant turn his video on?
If I know how, let me see. Let's see. Start video. Oh, I don't know if you want to see me.
Okay, there you go. All right, thank you. So you said items forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one were all related to the same item, Mr. Davis?
I think it's forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, if I'm looking at gender correctly. It is not forty-nine, it's fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, Scott. Yeah, my apologies. You have fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that threw me off when you said forty-nine because I knew that when they'd been postponed to the next month. Okay, I think I know the answer is there. Opposition present?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hilton. Okay. All right, what I'd like to do, so Mr. Green has given a quick overview of what was proposed. We have both the applicant and opposition present at the meeting. So what I'm going to do is give each side approximately seven minutes just to sort of make a statement or talk about what this particular either there, why they're doing it, why it should be approved and or what the problems were with the property. So I'm going to give the applicant, Mr. Davis, the first shot at this.
I'll yield to the opposition.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Hilton.
Yes, I'm Cliff Hilton, twelve oh five Coil Lane. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and Mr. Davis. First of all, I want to commend you guys for continuing this process. This is the second one of these meetings I've attended, and I know it's been challenging for you guys, and I must say kind of following rezonings through this has been quite challenging from a citizen standpoint as well. Let me first say, I I'm here on my own behalf. I do not represent the interests of the Pine Springs neighborhood residents, the adjoining neighborhood, or Mrs. Hobson, who is part of part of this process as well. She's an adjoining property owner that has or shares the right of way that is, or excuse me, a joint permanent easement that is part of this rezoning or the access to this rezoning. But I will refer to them and I hope that they're watching tonight. As I said, we own twelve oh five Coil Lane, which is a five acre or approximately five acre tract that borders roughly four hundred and sixty feet of the nine acre tract, which is, I believe that is item fifty-two, three H twenty RZ. As I kind of dove into this thing and Mr. Davis has been very, you know, I've had a couple of conversations both by email and text and and my phone, and he's been helpful for the most part, had a little bit of trouble getting some, a couple of things to ask for, but he got got those to me. I do appreciate that, Mr. Davis. So when I looked at this, I was more or less looking at it, how it affected or the potential for a development would affect our property from a visibility standpoint. We've got a pretty good view from where we are up on top of the hill, and I wanted to see where rooftops and that sort of thing. So I wanted to see elevations and kind of how it related to our property. And as I kind of dove into the to the rezoning and the potential development as a whole, it raised multiple questions for me. I've never been on this side of one of these these rezonings, and so it was kind of interesting being on this side of it. It appears that most of the people that are being affected by this do not know anything about it, or very little, I should say. I visited Mrs. Hobson at ninety-one twenty-five Bluegrass on Tuesday, the nineteenth, that was last Tuesday. She's the person that shares the joint permanent easement and that actually provides the majority or all the access currently to this property. And and just to see where she stood on the potential development, and she had no idea about tonight's vote. I asked her about signage because there was none up that night, that was Tuesday of last week, on the on any of the properties, and she said she had not seen some for quite some time, were her exact words. So that evening, I went door to door and spoke to five different residents in Pine Springs, three of which backed up to the 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 property being potentially rezoned. They knew nothing about it. Well, excuse me, I take that back. Two of them knew something about the rezoning, but none of them had any idea about tonight's meeting and and had multiple questions for me. They also did not realize that one of their neighbors has granted a forty-foot right of way through the back of her subdivision property. Nor did they understand the the potential impact both from a traffic standpoint and school standpoint, because I immediately got tons of questions regarding both of those. I've gone on to speak since then, or later that week, I've spoken with three of the the current Pine Springs two homeowners association president. Pine Springs two is a development attached to the backside of this this front section. Parts of Pine Springs two, I believe, touched this also. The homeowners association president knew nothing. Another homeowners association member knew nothing. A former member of the homeowners association knew nothing and confirmed that they had not seen any advertisements signage for this rezoning tonight. I met with Chairman Nystrom, who was kind enough to meet me out there on Saturday and this this past Saturday, and we found the signs behind a locked gate on the property. Mr. Chairman Nystrom was able to finagle those out, and we reinstalled them. So I'm hoping some of those citizens are watching tonight. I realize you guys do not consider private subdivision restrictions as part of rezoning, rezoning matters. Mrs. Hobson, it would seem though, in this this matter, Mrs. Hobson's joint permanent easement agreement is made part of the MPC documentation, and it clearly states that she has a restriction on the portion of the property that's not being rezoned tonight. I think it already has, I'm not exactly sure what the rezoning is on it, but it will be part of an ultimate development. She, the property owner in Pine Springs that has granted this forty-foot easement, as I say, appears which this access is reliant upon is at this point, and what's being proposed relies on this forty-foot easement that violates the subdivision covenants and restrictions. And as I said, all of this hinges the access to this this development. If you've looked at your documentation, which I'm sure you have, there's a choke point that all these, this twenty-five foot joint permanent easement and right of way come together that provide the access to this property. It's a split piece of property. I think it's two F is separate from two E and three H. And it has, there's a seventy-five foot stretch that has to come across or looks appears to be about seventy-five feet. So this thing is anything but straightforward, the access to it. In an email that's on page seventeen of your MPC documentations, there's an email exchange between Liz Albertson and Mr. Davis on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of of February where she questions this access. Mr. Davis said states that you can't, his understanding is that you can access brand residential over residential A. Mrs. Albertson's email seems to disagree with that, and there's no Mrs. Hobson's property that contains the joint permanent easement is zoned agricultural. Now, I'm no zoning expert, but I thought that that would, both of those pieces would have to be rezoned in order to gain access. And I don't see any any resolution to those two matters. Right now, I'm simply asking you guys to postpone the vote. This, I'm not necessarily opposed to Mr. Davis's development, but being on this side of it, it's been kind of interesting with just the lack of 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 information that's out there or is being provided to the public. And so I, at this point, I would just ask that you postpone the the your vote, at least until the citizenry that's affected by this can be a little bit better informed, have the opportunity to be informed. And certainly, Mrs. Williams needs to be informed by someone that she's in violation of the covenants and restrictions, and she may find herself in civil court before all this is this is done if if one of her neighbors decides to pursue civil action. So just want to make you guys aware of all that because it's complicated rezoning.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hilton. And by the way, what will probably happen with this, Mr. Hilton, is, you know, Mr. Davis will make a statement, and then I'm sure some of the Commissioners will probably have some questions, and you may get called on. So just, I know Mr. Davis has been here quite a few times, and that was how it goes. All right, go ahead, Mr. Davis.
And I appreciate your all's time, and and all we're looking at tonight is whether or not the zoning is appropriate for this area. And by unanimous vote of MPC, it was voted that yes, the zoning is appropriate for the area for all the reasons that Mr. Green stated. The access, everything else that Mr. Hilton has referred to has nothing to do with the zoning. All we're doing tonight is asking whether or not this is an appropriate zoning for the property. As you all know, all the other issues that were described by Mr. Hilton, in no due respect to Mr. Hilton, all those are dealt with through the concept plan and through Engineering and Public Works. Prior to going through all of those steps and spending thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, we first need to know whether or not we can develop the property and we can get the zoning that we have requested and that MPC unanimously approved. As it relates to notice, every single adjacent property owner receives notice from MPC, as y'all were aware. We have put up signs actually three different times because this has been postponed and moved and changed. The signs went up three different times. Signs do not go up for county commission meetings. Signs go up, as you know, and notices go out for county commission, I mean, for MPC meetings and not for county commission meetings. So all I'm asking for tonight is respectfully approve as per MPC's unanimous vote to approve the zoning for the property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Let me pull up the transition box. There may be some questions about this. I've got one kind of kind of question right off the bat. Mr. Green, and, you know, we've seen a whole lot of zonings come through, and I don't know that I've ever seen one come through that's asked where it settled at three point four five units an acre. Usually it's three and a half. I mean, it was, there's some sort of math behind that. I'm just, I'm really curious where that three point four five number came from as the recommendation, because usually, you know, we're talking threes, three and a half, fours. I guess in terms of what Mr. Davis is planning, where did that number come from? I know that Mr. Davis has originally asked for, I think, for five, but where did that number, it would usually be three and a half or something. Was there something in the the land that drove that?
There was some math involved, and it was regarding the slope analysis for, and as we stated before, there are three properties that are grouped together and three cases that are grouped together. The property designated, which is the file number, the first one that came in, two E twenty RZ, which is the one we are now had a slope analysis. I'm trying to remember this, about three point three units an acre that that's what the slope analysis stated should be developed on that property. The other large property, which was a separate file number, three H twenty RZ had a slope analysis, and these may be reversed, that called for three point six units an acre, or three point three, three point six. Midpoint is three point four or five for the two properties together.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Skidmaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is for Director Green. Can you go to the color drawing on page eighteen of this file?
And I don't have the file that you have. I've had the planning file, and what I have is color drawing that shows the zoning of the surrounding properties. Is that the one you're speaking of?
Yeah, this one was sent sent with a little red circle drawn around it to how the two properties are going to connect from Bluegrass Road to the major development. Is that where they're talking about the easement? There's a problem there?
Yes, yes, sir. That's the concern. And again, we delayed, worked with Mr. Davis for, since February, or earlier, since January, to try to address the access to this property to to ensure that he had the guarantee of access necessary for the planning commission to recommend approval, or staff to to recommend approval and for planning commission to carry forward with that. As Mr. Davis said, there are still details to be worked out with the the road construction during the concept plan and the engineering of the project, but we communicated with Engineering and Public Works and the joint public easement that was negotiated with between Mr. Davis and I don't think it was Hobson, I think it was the other lady, met the the requirements to to guarantee access as needed for a zoning recommendation.
Okay, well, it, so is the property that's classified as one one one, is that where the easement is being granted from?
Believe so, and I don't have the same drawing that you do, I don't believe. I don't, looking through the, for the one with the red circle and.
I got you, Cliff.
Got about half.
Oh, I was going to help, Mr. Schumacher. The one one one, I'm sorry, sir, the one 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 is where the joint, that's Miss Hobson's property, that's the joint permanent easement. If you see the Pine Springs lot number three, it kind of has a, it creates, it helps hit the choke point. The forty-foot right of way comes across that section.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
I mean, I guess, are there any other questions about this one?
I had one for Mr. Green.
Yeah.
Mr. Green, so am I correct in in saying that the that the access for planned residential cannot be across agricultural or residential A zoning? Am I incorrect in that?
They're all allowed residential uses, and so our interpretation is since agricultural allows residential uses, then residential access can be provided across agriculture, agriculturally zoned land. Again, the it permits the residential use, so therefore access for that permitted use is appropriate.
Hey, Mr. Davis, this is Commissioner Nystrom with a question again. How, it just, it's a tight choke point right there. So it looks like you've gotten the easement there. I mean, Mr. Snowden, I know we're not going to get drilled down deep on this. I just wanted, is that is that going to be wide enough if if everything goes through with the the easement that you've got there? You know, that that's kind of, I went out and full disclosure here, and you love these awkward meetings here. I'm old friends with Mr. Hilton, and I'm old friends with Mr. Davis. So both are very old friends of mine, so but so I want to be fair to to both of them on this. So.
A lot older than I am.
You're older than me too, Scott.
We're the same vintage.
Yeah. I'm probably the only one that recognizes your football number from high school and your email address. So but so, you know, having, so, you know, Cliff had called me Friday and had some questions about it, and I did drive out there and meet him Saturday morning just to look at it. And, you know, the 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 tight point was really, as Mr. Hilton had mentioned in his emails, that you kind of got to see it. And I know when you look at the the property on the maps there, it almost reminded me if you were to take two rectangles and put them together, you'd only let the rectangles touch at the very tip corner. You know, that's kind of what what the access is like, where you've got just a little bitty access point there. So I guess, you know, it, I'd like to get Mr. Snowden's take or just anybody with the the construction piece. I mean, that's just a tight access point that made me want to kind of question, just verify that this could be approved. I mean, generally speaking, when this body receives something from the planning commission with the unanimous vote, and frankly, relatively low density. I mean, this is anything below three and a half is is, if you look at most of the stuff that comes through here, that's 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 on the low side. So the the issue is this is really access point, and I think, Mr. Hilton, you'd you'd mentioned to me some current concerns about the line of sight on this one as that gets built up potentially on on the slope on this one. I guess, Scott, if you could talk a little bit more in detail about out what that access point would potentially look like, and I know that we're we're just talking about the the zoning and or and Mr. Hilton, you know, you, you know, what was your concern? I know about potential view sites on that one. I just want to make sure that some of that stuff has been talked to.
And I don't want to speak for Mr. Snowden, but as I understand with a private road, the minimum requirement is forty feet for your right of way.
Are you there?
And actually, we have, we have, we have forty feet from the parcel number three, as Mr. Hilton stated. And then there's a ten feet from their property, at least ten feet from their property over to the adjacent parcel, which is Mrs. Hobson's, which is another, so that actually technically adds up to ten, I mean, fifty feet of right of way. You take in the forty feet from parcel number three and the ten feet separating parcel three from parcel one eleven. And I've met with Mrs. Hobson probably, I don't know, probably ten times, and she's very much aware of what's going on. I've I've met with her and her daughter and her son and her kids and her cats and her dogs. I've met with them many, many, many times, and so they're very familiar with what we're doing.
Okay, all right. Jim, are you here?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The, I concur with Scott. I haven't looked at the topography out there in great detail, but forty feet of right of way should be sufficient and is sufficient in most instances to to put a twenty-six foot wide public street. Scott, I was going to ask is, are you proposing this to be a private street or a public street?
Well, if we if we can't get fifty feet, then we would make it private. If we can get fifty feet, then we would make it public.
Okay, good deal. Either way, Chairman and Commissioners, I believe that the access could be provided through a forty-foot right of way or easement.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Skidmaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was kind of my question that Jim had answered. So in other words, would it from Bluegrass Road into the choke point, would that be accepted by Knox County at the present time? In the small triangle area?
Yeah, Commissioner Skidmaker, yes, if Scott does build it to our standards, we would accept that as a public street. Yes, sir.
Okay, but then if the next part, if he cannot get fifty feet, that portion would be a private road?
Not necessarily. We we have granted variances in right of way for certain sections, especially a section like that where you have limited space between it. I think that a right of way of forty foot could be granted for a public road in that location.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other Commissioners have any follow-up questions on this one? Okay, I'll grant, Mr. Hilton, any other comments? Or follow-up or questions that you might have?
I don't think so. I mean, it it it's clear that that it's not a concern for the county. I just, it seems like it. Let me ask you this. It sounds like neither of those pieces of property will have to be rezoned, either the the parcel number three or one 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 through this through this process. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Mr. Green? Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you. That, I guess the other comment that I would make is that, and I realize Mr. Davis has had trouble, he's added the three H late in the game, that may have been part of his his delay in or having to postpone and trying to work out what he was going to do there. But I do think it's interesting that someone, that the citizenry, and again, I'm speaking as Knox County citizen here, that you can relieve, receive notice on January the twenty-fifth, I think, was the post date on the the original card that I received and essentially received nothing else. Now, I realize my access to this is from Westland Drive. So I don't go to on Bluegrass Road. If I had not been paying attention with a card that was received on on the twenty-fifth, I've got four hundred and sixty feet that borders this property. I'm probably as affected as anybody. I'm not trying to as far as a square footage standpoint, I realize everyone is is important there. But the fact that that in four months, we're four months down the road, and and clearly the the sign a week before this meeting, there is, there was no signage up, and what I'm understanding is is that that's not even required, which was not my understanding. But but I I I think the Commissioners, I would ask the Commissioners, you need to look at the process if that is indeed the case. The advertising process.
I mean, I can. I mean, I can, to your points, and Commissioner Schumaker, just I'll get to you in just a second. I know when I went out there, I accessed the property via Bluegrass Drive, and there was something that looked like a small power station that was behind there, or a utility connector on the little island there that had some fencing around it, and the the signs were in there. I don't know if it had been mowed since then, or something, and the mower had had put them in there, but at least when we went out there Saturday, all three signs were there, but they had not they weren't out on the the front-facing road. Go ahead, Commissioner Schumaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Green, so basically, is it about 47 acres total for this project? With all three parcels?
I think that's approximately correct.
Okay, so we're looking at roughly 160-plus homes?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Hang on. I would ask that from Mr. Davis, I thought this was 23 acres, because that's my other concern.
I think it's 22.67, or I don't know the exact number, but it's not 40 something acres, it's 22.
Well, the next file is 17 acres, and the following file is another five, so if you add that together, doesn't the three parcels come to about 47 acres? Or is that just not not filed correctly with the MPC? So how many I guess the question would be is how many homes are you anticipating for the total three parcels?
Let me I can calculate the acres real quick, I may be incorrect when I say.
Aren't you subdividing that 9-acre track out of a larger piece, the 3H?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Mr. Schumaker, I see you talking it.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, just how many on the total project, how many homes?
So is that 77 homes?
Your math, I don't have a calculator here, so whatever, you know, I think 22.63, I think maybe the number, and we agreed on a compromise to the 3.45, and as we stated with Mr. Green earlier.
Okay, so just so I have it clear, then, so for the total of the three applications that we're hearing tonight, it's a total of about 78 homes, or what do you say, 22.7 acres total for the three filings here this evening? Is that correct?
Whatever the math is, yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Is there any additional discussion on this item? Okay, I do want to get a motion on the, as recall, we've discussed in great detail items of 50, 51, and 52, as are all pertaining to the same property. Go ahead, Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to hear from the opposition, because is that, tell me again how many homes that is, and if is correct to say 22.63, and it said 3.45 homes per acre, then that math problem doesn't add up to the total number of homes we initially said was was the recommendation under MPC?
Well, let's see here, if it's if I'm going to round up to even say 23 homes, or excuse me, 23 acres, times 3.45, and that's right around.
3.45.
Yeah. That's about 78 homes, 77.7, 78 there, if you round up, it comes up to 79.
And is the opposition, is that what you understood was being put on the property? Mr. Hilton?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate your acknowledgement of the public, because this process under Zoom is difficult with the public who are not present to add their input. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Hey, does anyone want to make a motion on this property?
I'll make a, I guess we're on the first one?
We're on the first one. Yeah, hold on, actually, Commissioner Biggs turned his light on about the same time he did. Go ahead, Commissioner Biggs.
Thank you, Chairman Nosh, I just wanted to make it noted that I'm going to have to respectfully recuse myself on these next three. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, back to you, Commissioner Anders.
Yeah, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve per MPC recommendation on 2E20RC.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
I'll second it, Commissioner Smith.
All right, so we have a motion from Commissioner Anders and a second from Commissioner Smith. All right, that motion is properly on the floor. Is there any additional discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Pass.
Commissioner Nastrom passes. Commissioner Schumaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schumaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye, and Commissioner Biggs recuses.
Okay, the I'll maintain as a pass on this one, and we can it what was the total vote there, should that have been, was that nine, one, nine with one pass and one abstention?
Nine aye, one pass, one recuse.
Okay. All right, it passes. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
This is item number 51, 3-h-20-RC, request of Scott Davis, Masana Investments LLC for rezoning from A Agricultural for 9.4 acres only to PR Plan Residential, up to five dwelling units per acre. Property located at Zero Coal Lane, parcel ID 144112.02, part of Commission District Five.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. This is a neighboring property to the one we just heard, and the planning commission, again, recommended by a vote of 12 to zero, property be rezoned to PR at a density of 3.45 dwelling units an acre, finding that that zoning would be at that density would be compliant with the LDR Sector Plan Classification for the Southwest County, and also would be compliant with the slope analysis for the property.
All right, thank you. And I see the applicant is present, Mr. Davis, and I see that Mr. Hilton here is as the opposition. I'll go ahead and call on Mr. Davis, if you'd like to make a brief statement on this one.
I yield to the opposition.
Okay, all right, Mr. Hilton?
I I think everything I've said everything that I said in the first.
Okay.
Rezoning, it's all tied together.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, then the Chair will look to the floor for a motion on this property, unless there's any additional questions about it from the the body. Okay, is there a motion?
Commissioner Anders, I'll make a motion to approve per MPC recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Anders, is there a second? Second for Mr. Bessler. Okay, all in favor, Madam Clerk, please lead a roll call vote.
Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Pass.
Commissioner Nastrom passes. Commissioner Schumaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schumaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs recuses.
Okay, and it.
Commissioner Gill?
Commissioner Gill, your microphone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gill votes aye.
Okay, and it passes with the non-affirmatives. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
This is item number 52, 2-f-20-RC, request of Masana Investments LLC for rezoning from A Agricultural to PR Plan Residential, up to five dwelling units per acre. Property located 9145 Bluegrass Road, parcel ID 144117, in the 5th Commission District.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Green?
I think that was 3.45, not five.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. This is the third and final piece for the three properties that are linked in terms of their development pattern and request. The planning commission, again, recommended 12 to zero, that the property be rezoned, PR and a density of 3.45 dwelling units an acre, finding that would be compatible with the LDR Sector Plan designation, and also with the slope analysis for the property.
All right, very good. And I see the applicant, Mr. Davis, is present, as well as the opposition. I don't want to assume anything, but you're I'll accept your statements from the prior resolution, would still carry over to this third one. All right, thank you.
Yes, I can I just thank the Commission for allowing me to come meet, join you guys tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you, Cliff. Okay, we'll go ahead, that Chair needs a motion on this item.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, all right, the motion came from Commissioner Bessler and was seconded by Commissioner Anders. Madam Clerk, would you please complete a roll call vote?
Is it to approve per?
First, per staff recommendation, yes.
Per MPC, or per staff?
Yes.
Start the roll call. Third Commission District, Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Schumaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schumaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye, sorry to get out of order there.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs recuses. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye, and Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. 10 aye, 1 recusal.
Okay, passes. All right, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number 53, 4-8-20-RC, request of William Wilson for rezoning from A Agricultural and CB Business and Manufacturing to PR Plan Residential, up to five dwelling units per acre. Property located at 401 Dry Gap Park, 5903 and 5923 Natural Lane, parcel ID 57MA01701702 and 014. This is in the 7th Commission District.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The planning commission voted 11 to zero in consent to recommend approval of the PR zoning designation at a density of five dwelling units an acre for this 8.5 acre parcel on the edge of the city of Knoxville, finding that the zoning would be compliant with the sector plan designation, and also compatible with the development in the surrounding area.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The applicant just kind of, can you turn your light on and name and address for the record?
Let's see. William Wilson, 120 Suburban Road, Knoxville, Tennessee 37923.
All right, thanks, Mr. Wilson. Okay, we got this came to us on the consent agenda. However, I do want to find out if there's anybody here who is in opposition. Drusilla, have you received any notes in opposition to this?
No, sir.
Okay, and I know Drusilla said that she is having a technical issue, so she may not be in the meeting, but I when I spoke with her right before this meeting started, she had not received any emails pertaining to this one in opposition. Otherwise, they would have been invited to participate in the call. So moving on, you know, I'll go, we've got, did we get a motion on this one?
I make a motion that we approve this rezoning as per planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you, Carringer.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Bessler and a second from Commissioner Carringer. All right, is there any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor, please vote with a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Schumaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schumaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bessler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye, aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Our members voting aye.
All right, thank you. It passes, and good luck to you.
Thank you, guys, stay safe.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item number 54 is request of Dan Kirby, DK Development, for rezoning from A Agricultural to PR Plan Residential, up to five dwelling units per acre. Property located at 6848 Beeler Road, parcel ID 2021401, and this is in the 8th Commission District.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. The planning commission recommended by a vote of 11 to zero on consent agenda to recommend approval of the PR Plan Residential zoning for this 14.25 acre parcel at a density of five dwelling units an acre, finding that that density would be compatible with the sector plan designation, and also with the surrounding development pattern.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Mr. Kirby?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there any opposition present? All right, and once again, I must reference that I spoke to Drusilla right before the meeting to find out if there was any opposition, and she had not been contacted by any otherwise they would have been invited to speak. And Mr. Kirby, if you don't mind, could you please state your name, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Danny Kirby, 3035 Cork Royal Lane, Knoxville, Tennessee 37938.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, not seeing any opposition, I would like to get a motion on this one. Commissioner Beeler? All right, Commissioner Beeler, your microphone?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Mr. Kirby. Mr. Kirby, I've looked at your, I think I've seen your site plan on this, is 43, 44 units, is that what you're planning here?
Yes, sir, I think we ended up with 45 with a common area lot.
Okay.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah, and I'm just I'm just trying to do the math on that, just for 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 the reason, I believe, it's 14 acres, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so that works out to 3.21 or something like that. Yeah, I'm going to make a motion on this, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm gonna make a motion on this, uh, Mr. Chairman. I, I, I think this is an appropriate development. I, I, you know, I think it's a, I think Mr. Kirby's done a good job on the density. I think it'll be relatively low impact, and this, this part of Beeler Road's already seen some improvements made in recent years. I'm not comfortable with the density that the planning commission is recommending on this. I, I just, I think it's way too aggressive for the Harbison's Crossroads area and the Collector Roads that uh, the, the shape they're currently in, and so I am gonna make a motion that we approve this zoning change per the planning commission's recommendation, but at a density of three point two five units per acre. I think that is a better precedent to set.
Second, Biggs.
Okay, so we have a proper motion on the floor to uh, accept the zoning recommendation, but a density of three point two five. That was made by Commissioner Beeler and uh, seconded by Commissioner Biggs. So that is what we have on the floor. Uh, discussion, I've got both Commissioners Anderson Smith have weighed in, so Commissioner Anders first.
Yeah, I just wanted to, before we rezone somebody's property at a, a different than the application and recommendation, I want to make sure that they're okay with it at that three point two five.
Yeah, I'll, yes, I, I think we're okay with that. We, you know, we ran the uh, uh, first concept plan. There's uh, a creek back there in the very back. We didn't intend to uh, uh, cross that. We pulled that back in. I, I think we're comfortable with that number, the three point two five.
Okay, sounds good. All right, Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Green? Sir, what is the uh, subdivision to the north of that zone? That and the subdivision, I guess, would be to the east of it?
In just a moment, uh, just a moment, I'll check that. Commissioner Smith? Oops, get on the right. Looking at the wrong one. Hold on just a moment. I gotta head of, you guys are moving so fast. I went on to the next uh, agenda item.
Very tiny on my map, but I believe it's one to five to the north.
Yes, sir, it's one to five.
And then one to three to the east. There is a vacant piece of land, and that subdivision's actually... No, it does come in down there. I, I just wonder if we put it at three point two five, do we in any way hinder any of the properties that are further south? And I can see doing this property with the creek in the back, and it is a, looks like it's gonna be a thermometer type subdivision, one road in. Uh, just do we leave, do we leave the surrounding landowners bound to the three point two five? Because I think in this area, you know, a three point five is more appropriate, even if this one can't be developed at that.
Look at each property, rezoning requests on an individual basis and look at the characteristics. We do look somewhat at the surrounding uh, properties, but in this area, there's uh, there's some one, one to five, one to three, there's a range, and we'd be, we're also becoming very aware of the need for higher density to address the housing needs of the county, so I don't think it would have an adverse impact on the surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, back to you, Commissioner Beeler.
Oh, I'm good. Thank you. Mr. Green answered that.
Okay, great. All right, we have that motion uh, on the floor. Uh, I'd like to move to a vote on it. Uh, so uh, Madam Clerk, would you please lead a roll call vote?
Commissioner Skummaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skummaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Caranger?
Aye.
Commissioner Caranger votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, thank you. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, and the uh, next item on our agenda, Madam Clerk?
Item number fifty-five is four dash E dash twenty dash SP, request of Benjamin C. Mullins, O B O Crippen Gap LLC for North County Sector Plan Amendment from O Office and SP String Protection to LI Light Industrial and SP Stream Protection. Property is located at thirty-eight fifteen Schatzman Lane, parcel ID forty-eight CA zero zero two zero one, in the Seventh Commission District.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The uh, planning commission voted twelve to zero to adopt the uh, resolution amending the North Count- County Sector Plan to Light Industrial and String Protection because of an era, era in the sector plan, which should have recognized the existing industrial zoning and existing land uses when it was developed years ago.
Very good. Okay, is the applicant present?
I am. Ben Mullins, five fifty West Main Street, Suite five hundred here for the applicant.
All right, thank you. Is there any opposition? Okay, uh, once again, Drusilla did not receive any opposition things before the meeting began. Uh, is there any questions before I call for a motion? Okay, I'd like to call for a motion on this particular item, and then we can uh, move on if there's any additional discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the sector plan by the Pl- Planning Commission's actions to try and get this all zoned correctly up there.
That's good. Thanks. All right, thanks. The original motion uh, came from Commissioner Bustler with a second from Commissioner Caranger, and uh, all in favor, vote by a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Caranger?
Aye.
Commissioner Caranger votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skummaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skummaker votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a uh, follow-up resolution in front of us. Madam Clerk? And it does pass to do a big, for the record, that one does pass. So, Madam Clerk, next item?
On page twelve, item number fifty-six, request of Benjamin C. Mullins, O B O Crippen Gap LLC for rezoning from CA General Business to I Industrial to I Industrial. Property located at thirty-eight fifteen Schatzman Lane, parcel ID forty-eight CA zero zero two zero one, in the Seventh Commission District.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. By vote of twelve to zero, the planning commission recommended approval of the industrial zoning for this four point four acre parcel as an extension of the existing zoning and also recognizing the existing land uses on the property.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present?
I am. Ben Mullins, five fifty West Main Street, Suite five hundred.
All right, thank you. And I don't believe any opposition's come in since we uh, passed the last resolution, so uh, could have a, a motion. I see Commissioner Anders' light on.
Yeah, before the motion, I was just gonna ask if Ben lost a bet and lost his beard in a vet somewhere.
Uh, no, no, it's, it's seasonal. It'll come back uh, when the weather gets cooler.
Uh, I, I don't wanna take Charlie's thunder, I just wanted to ask Ben that.
Ben, I got a question too, before I make the motion here. You're up there next to Cube Smart and uh, what is it? Is it Presley's old shop that was up there, Rue of Presley's is up there on top? What are y'all gonna do with that property?
Well, right now, it's under lease for a recycling and salvage center, which is what it's been used for, for, for years. So I don't think there's gonna be any change in the, in the use. It was just identified to us by county codes that our zone was inconsistent with what we were actually using it for, and so uh, this was the most efficient way uh, to uh, solve that problem.
Yeah, I saw the recycling that there. There wasn't, it just showed, you know, just the road up there. I was just wondering what else was gonna be done up there.
I, I don't, I don't know about that, Commissioner Bustler.
Okay, anyway, uh, I wanna make a motion that we uh, approve the rezoning as per the planning commission's recommendation.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Skummaker. Okay, all in favor, uh, uh, now, Commissioner Anders, your light is still on there, so we're, uh, let's turn that off. And then uh, we'll proceed with the uh, roll call vote on this, but uh, back to you, Mr. Mullins. Uh, I guess at the end of the day, hair today, gone tomorrow. Uh, so, that said, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could lead a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Bustler? Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Caranger?
Aye.
Commissioner Caranger votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skummaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skummaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Anders votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. All right, good luck. Glad we got that fixed. Uh, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item number fifty-seven, four dash H dash twenty dash SP, request of Terry Romans for South County Sector Plan Amendment from Agricultural to LDR Low Density Residential. Property located at eighty-nine zero four and eighty-nine zero eight Severville Park, parcel ID one three eight two six eight and two six seven, Commission District nine.
Okay, Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The planning commission voted to adopt the resolution amending the South County Sector Plan to RR Rural Residential by vote of, of twelve to zero, because that sector plan did not recognize the substandard size of existing parcels within the rural area of the growth policy plan.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Okay, I'm seeing Terry Romans uh, flashed up, but your microphone is off. So, Mr. Romans, if you could turn on your microphone and camera there uh, to be fully present.
You got me?
Yeah, I can hear you. And if you, if you've got a, a camera, that would be helpful.
Let's see.
Says there, says like-
Says you cannot start video because the host has stopped it.
Okay. Rob, has he got his video turned off?
I'm clicking on it, but it's not turning on.
There you are. Okay, very good.
Okay, you got him?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Romans, could you state your name and address for the records?
Uh, Terry Romans, nineteen twenty-three Hopewell Road, Knoxville, Tennessee, three seven nine two zero.
All right, thank you very much. All right, is there any opposition present? Okay, I don't believe we have any on this one. Uh, Commissioner Smith?
I, I, I just had a question for Gerald, but uh, Commissioner Daley can go ahead and make his motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I'll make a motion that we approve per KK P. Planning's recommendation.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Beeler.
Second for Mr. Beeler. All right, uh, thank you. Uh, I know you had a question, Mr. Smith?
Yes, it is for Director Green. I think I heard you say that um, the reason for approving this, when I looked at it, it looked like two normal lots, uh, is because the sector plan and the rural growth area doesn't rec- didn't take into account that there are substandard lots that do not meet that standard within that boundary. Do we have a lot of those?
We're finding more and more smaller lots. Uh, last month, uh, if you remember, uh, Miss, Mr. and Mrs. Longmire, we're finding them scattered throughout the county, and it seems like every other month or so, we'd get requests where there's a lot that's below the one acre minimum lot size for agricultural, or there's a, you know, a lot that's one point nine acres that the owner wants to subdivide into two lots, and we're using, fortunately, we have the rural residential sector plan designation news that allows up to two dwelling units an acre.
And it, and it seems like we're finding a lot more of these uh, I'll call them commercial industrials that were overlooked in the sector plan changes too.
Yes, and uh, I don't, um, I wish I could give a good explanation for that, and I can't. It's um, we have not, the sector, older sector plans seem to have not been done with the concern about existing land uses that's, that were done more recently.
I, I, I'm just glad we have a way of rectifying these problems and taking care of our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Are there any uh, follow-up questions? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, could you please lead a roll call vote?
Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Caranger?
Aye.
Commissioner Caranger votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner National votes aye. Commissioner Skummaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skummaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler? Commissioner Bustler votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, thank you. All right, it passes. Okay, uh, Commissioner Smith, your light is still on. Are you uh, wrapped up? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Madam Clerk, next item, also-
Item number fifty-eight, four dash G dash twenty dash R C, request of Terry Romans for rezoning from A Agricultural to RA Low Density Residential. Property located at eighty-nine zero four and eighty-nine zero eight Severville Park, parcel ID one three eight two six eight and two six seven, in the Ninth Commission District.
All right, thank you. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. By vote of twelve to zero, the planning commission recommended approval of the planned residential zoning at a density of up to two dwelling units an acre, which would be consistent with the rural residential sector plan amendment recently approved.
All right, thank you. And uh, I know uh, I know Mr. Romans is present, and he previously stated his name and address for the record on the first resolution, and I'm also not aware that any uh, opposition has come in in the last few minutes. So uh, Chair will entertain a motion on this one?
Motion to approve per KK CP's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Daley, and is there a second?
Second.
All right, second, is it, that was Mr. Skummaker, is that right? All right, okay, uh, Madam Clerk, would you lead a roll call vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Caranger?
Aye.
Commissioner Caranger votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrom?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrom votes aye. Commissioner Skummaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skummaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bustler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bustler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right, thank you. That passes. Okay, our uh, second to final um, agenda item. So uh, Madam Clerk, next item? All right. Thank you. That passes. Okay. Our second and final agenda item. So, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item number 59 is four dash H dash 20 dash R C. Request of Grant McHam, McCamey Construction for rezoning from A Agricultural to P R Plan Residential at two dwelling units per acre. Property located at 1629 and 0 Polkright Lane, Parcel ID 134 G A 022 and 02201, in the 4th Commission District.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. By vote, excuse me, 11 to zero in consent. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the planned residential zoning. This 1.5 acre parcel at a density of up to two dwelling units an acre. I think it would be consistent with the sector plan designation also allowed development compatible with that of the surrounding area.
All right. Thank you. And is the applicant present? Grant, I could see that you're on the call, but can you turn on your microphone and camera? Let's click down. So, and if the applicant could also state her name and address for the record. Grant, are you here? I thought I saw you on the window a little bit ago. All right. What we'll do, we've got one more agenda item that what I'd like to do is move forward to, we've got a second reading. I'm going to ask Mr. Link if you could call Grant just to see if maybe he just dropped off the collar or something when he was trying to turn it on.
Chairman, he just came back in.
He what?
Hey, guys. Sorry. This is Grant. I got, I got knocked off.
Okay.
Thank you. Grant, Grant McHam, 124 South Gay Street, Knoxville, 37902.
All right. Great. Grant, is your video camera working there?
Uh, yeah.
All right. There you go. All right. Thank you. Okay. And he stated is that, so, Mr. Green, you've already stated it. And Grant, you're here. And I have not had any calls or any opposition on this one. And no one has expressed it before the meeting and it passed on to consent agenda. So it's in my district. I'd like to make a motion for approval per the Knoxville, Knox County Planning Recommendations.
Second, Commissioner.
Okay. So the Commissioner Nastrum with the motion is second from Commissioner Smith. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. Commissioner Biggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrum?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrum votes aye. Commissioner Schoenmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders?
Aye.
Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bessler? Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right. Thank you. It passes and good luck. Thank you, Grant, for building in our community. So.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no zoning appeals, but we do have a amendment that's on a second reading. Madam Clerk?
This is a consideration of an ordinance of the Commission of Knox County, Tennessee, amending the Knox County Code, Appendix A, Zoning Article 3, Section 3.50 Off-Street Parking Regular requirements to allow a parking study to be submitted and approved as a basis for reducing the minimum number of off-street parking spaces. Ordinance number O dash 90 dash 9 dash 130 adopted September 10, 1990, as amended. This is O dash 20 dash 4 dash 101 on second reading.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Could I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. From a motion for approval from Mr. Daley with the second from Commissioner Beeler. This is the second reading. We've had extensive discussion and a public hearing on it. So I'm not seeing anyone who'd like to weigh in again. So, Madam Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill votes aye. Commissioner Carringer?
Aye.
Commissioner Carringer votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Nastrum?
Aye.
Commissioner Nastrum votes aye. Commissioner Schoenmaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Schoenmaker votes aye. Commissioner Anders? Commissioner Anders votes aye. Commissioner Bessler? Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner J?
Aye.
Commissioner J votes aye. All members present voting aye.
All right. Thank you. It passes. Not seeing any other business. The chair recognizes Commissioner Smith. Who's got his hand up?
I just want to say to my colleagues, I truly hope that we can meet in the same room again for our next meetings. I, I, the efficiency of this is not great. And also we have some commissioners that are going to be going off on commission. And I think it would be good. And also I think it's best for the public if we can all get back to meeting in person. So I think we should do everything in our power to make sure that from this point going forward, that if all possible, we meet in person.
Yeah, I totally, Commissioner Smith, I totally agree. I mean, maybe you could call it a novelty, but that first meeting, I think we're all, nobody knew exactly what was going on. And I got to tell you, this has been a, I guess a necessary, but big time pain in the neck. I'm so ready to move on. I got to tell you. So, and then somebody, I'm just curious, whose cat was it that we were hearing in the meeting earlier tonight? I'm just really curious if anybody wants to own that. I heard the cat. Was that you, Richie?
I think it's Gerald Green's cat.
I have an old cat that's parked on me and has a voice to go with it in public meetings.
Oh, that's funny. All right. Let's see. Commissioner Smith? All right. Commissioner Anders?
I just wanted to take a second just to recognize the historic moment of tonight. There was no zonings in District 6.
Wow. 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 You're right. Does that mean all the land's gone? Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Bessler?
Yes, I want to make an announcement, especially for Mr. Anders. We're getting real close to that senior living open up. If you come by this next month or so, they're selling those units right now. And I've got you on the agenda at the state level to where we're going to make a crossing across Emery Road to where you can get to our Brewster's Ice Cream and Wild Boar Inn. So you won't have to walk that far. And we are making it handicap accessible for the future for you also.
I think I'll stake in my seniors apartments out, out in my district. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Carringer?
Brad, Brad, you are about half his age, aren't you?
Yeah, there's some zoning math right there.
Yes, because Commissioner Bessler had a birthday just a few weeks ago. So anyway, yes, I just wanted to take a chance to congratulate the Fount City Man and Woman of the Year, Courtney Shea and Mark Capen. And just wanted to congratulate them and, and also echo what Randy Smith said. I miss seeing everybody and I'm thankful we've been able to continue the work, you know, for the county and our citizens, but there's nothing like being there in person and, and sharing the the other little quirks and all that we like to aggravate each other with.
True. All right. Thank you, Michelle. Got Carson and Biggs. All right, Carson?
Just wanted to confirm with our law department, make sure we done everything correctly.
It seems correct to me. Commissioner Daley?
Thanks, Daniel. Okay. Commissioner Biggs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I meant to ask this earlier. Tonight, we talked about a plaque that's going to be presented. Is there a date for that? And when it's going to be done as well as, are we going to get invitations and things of that nature?
Yeah, I don't know the details. I just recall what we talked about at the work session. There, there'll probably be a date to be determined by, probably by that department that brought that to us. So I'm sure once they get their dates squared away. And it's also a certain balance, I think, what we're in phase two. So they're, they want to try to keep the gatherings at 50 or below. So I know that that may be, may bear a little bit in mind of, you know, you count the commissioners, the mayor's group and all that, how many folks may want to be there. So, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I don't have a date for it myself. Thank you, sir. Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Gill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo and honor all of our Knox County seniors that are graduating and moving to the next phase of their lives. I know this is really a significant milestone for them. And I just wanted to make sure they are acknowledged that we are paying attention to their upcoming graduation ceremonies. And if we meet in person next month, I actually like to have some sour cream and onion potato chips versus the.
Whatever you wish, Commissioner Gill. We'll get.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know what they've upgraded with the food from downstairs, but I think some of us may want to spring on something nicer for dinner when we come back together. Speaking for myself. So, all right, that's it. Just a couple of little housekeeping items. As I said, it's our intent that we'll, we'll get back together for a more traditional meeting next month. As Mr. Harrod mentioned earlier, that the mayor's going to be making, having a budget announcement next week. And, you know, one question we want to find out will be, and I'll probably need to follow up with Brian, is they, I'm sure they'll probably be sending out a press release with the details on the when and where. Randy, you up there, you're up there in the office. I don't know if you might have more details, but I know that that'll probably be a video presentation. So I know that the mayor's office, after announcing it to us tonight, I'm sure there'll be a follow-up news release on it. And as mentioned at the last meeting, you know, our plans will be, we've got our regularly scheduled meetings in the third and fourth and a plan to vote on the budget by the fifth meeting, by the fifth Monday of June. So that, that's kind of what I'm rolling with. And I think, has everybody said everything? I just, I can see Brad, Carson and Justin have still got their blue hands raised up. Anything else? Okay. We are dismissed.